The clock, a call meeting to order. Can you do the roll call, Sarah?
Jim Whitaker.
Here.
Linda Barnhart.
Present.
Eric Goff.
Here.
Buchanan Norton.
Present.
Tim Lewis.
Present.
Daniel Gant.
Here.
Michael Bush.
Here.
Okay, we do have a quorum. The next item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. You said you amended the staff reports.
I amended one staff report, but I didn't amend the agenda.
Okay, alright. So I need an approval of the agenda. Motion Mr. Goff to approve the agenda. Second, and Ms. Norton, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, agenda is approved. Do we have anybody to sign up to speak under the open government? Okay, let the record show that there's no one to speak. Okay, we have approval of the meeting minutes. Motion Mr. Goff to approve the meeting minutes.
Second.
Second, Mr. Lewis. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Abstain due to absence.
Okay, one abstention by Mr. Gant due to absence.
Abstain.
And one abstention by Ms. Norton. With the ayes, it is approved. First public hearing, we have four public hearings this evening, cornerstone.
The first public hearing tonight is a staff report for requests for waiver. The project is Cornerstone Lot B8, file 2312-405. The developer is Jeffrey Michael, surveyor is Roberts Land Surveying. It's located in the Arden District, Tax Map 7, Parcel 32. The site's located at 42 Blessing Lane, approximately 150 feet off of Ardenville Road. The developer's proposing a 4.14 acre residential lot, which is currently improved with a single-family residence, and a 23 acre residue to be served by private well and septic. The developer's requesting a waiver to Section 305.4 of the subdivision ordinance, requiring DOH road frontage to proceed through the preliminary final plat process. Since the proposed 4.14 acre parcel's already improved and will be included in the cornerstone covenants and restrictions, staff recommends approval of the waiver to Section 305.4.1 contingent on the following: All existing lots, 1 through 8, and future lots within the cornerstone subdivision will be incorporated into the stormwater management design at the time of residue development.
Do we have anyone to represent the project?
Yes, Mike Roberts, President, Project.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, if you have questions, you want to make those known at this time, please come forward, state your name, your address, and the concerns that you have for this project. Let the record show that there is no one to speak. I have a motion of Mr. Goff.
Second.
Second, Mr. Gant, to close the public hearing. All those in favor? Any questions? Motion carries. Public hearing is now closed. Planning Commission members, do you have questions of Mr. Roberts or of the staff?
There are none, and we accept staff recommendation and approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Whitaker, second to Mr. Goff, to accept staff recommendation, and that is to approve the preliminary final plat. I'm sorry, approve the request for the waiver, and those conditions that we noted will be adhered to. All those in favor?
Aye.
Is there any questions? Oppose? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
The next public hearing is Mills Meadows.
This is a request for preliminary plan extension. The project is Mills Meadows, file 2312-402. The developer is Mills Meadows Development LLC, and the engineer is Greenway Engineering. It's located in the Arden District, Tax Map 19, Parcel 3 and 3.4. This property's located near 605 Near Bethel's Way. This project originally proposed 99 residential lots on 17.12 acres to be served by public water and sewer. At the September 21, 2020 Planning Commission meeting, the developer was denied a waiver to Section 502.1 of the subdivision ordinance, requiring a minimum of two points of access onto a public road or DOH right-of-way. Section 305.3 of the subdivision ordinance allows developers to request a one-year preliminary plan extension no more than twice. This is the first preliminary plan extension request for Mills Meadows. Since Mills Meadows was approved under current ordinance requirements, staff recommends approval of the one-year preliminary plan extension request.
Okay, do we have anyone to represent Mills Meadows?
Kenny Miller with Mills Meadows Group.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, if you have questions, comments on this project, now's your opportunity to make those known. Please come forward, state your name, your address, and any questions you might have regarding this project.
I think the motion will go to public hearing.
We have someone to speak.
My name is Kristen Triggs, and I have two questions for the planning committee. The first question, is there clarification on where the water will be taken in for this committee? I heard, or for this community, I heard that it was a public. I live at Mills Farm, and in the past two years, our water pressure has got depleted quite a bit over the past two years because of other developing in the area, and I'm wondering if it's going to be drawn from the same water source? If there's any changes to that? And my second question for the committee is, will there be a Department of Highway road study on that street access? Also, in the last two years with more development, the traffic on that road has increased quite a bit, accidents have happened, there's a guardrail with a very sharp turn, where accidents and the guardrail has been pushed off of the road, and those are my two main concerns.
Okay. Staff, do you want to answer those questions?
DOH never required a traffic impact study to begin with, so I can't see them requiring one now. But again, that'll be up to DOH at the time of final plat submission. And the water source, I'm assuming that it's the same water source, it's the same water infrastructure that they'd be tying also. But again, yeah, again, the Water Department, their approvals don't really ever have an expiration date on it, but we would ask that they weigh in at the time of final plat submission. The Water District.
They're gonna do a major upgrade on that plant on the north end, just the first, yeah, south end.
Does that answer your questions? Any other persons wish to speak under public?
Good evening, my name's Nancy Zombek, my address is 132 S Tech Drive. My question is, is this for approval just for a one-year extension?
Yes.
Just one year?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions? Okay, let the record show that there's no additional questions. I have a motion of Mr. Goff to close public hearing.
Second.
Second to Mr. Gant. Are there any questions, planning commission members? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes, thank you.
We didn't vote on the action.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay. Does somebody want to make a motion then on those?
I make a motion to accept staff recommendation.
I have a motion, Mr. Gant, second to Mr. Goff, to accept staff recommendation, and that is to grant a one-year extension to Mills Meadows. All those in favor?
Madam President, I just have a quick question for staff. On extensions like this, for something like a highways permit, that is retro, based on data that happened a long time ago, what is the effect of an extension on those approvals?
Well, the entrance permit is valid for a year. And I looked at this one, it's valid for a year. If they don't construct the entrance, then they have to go back to DOH.
I see what you mean, so that's a dynamic number.
And what I've seen in the past is DOH literally just gives them the permit. The same, with the same items.
Well, this one was done in 2021.
Yeah, so they'll, so they'll either ask for a traffic impact study to be done, which, again, I don't see that happening, because I haven't seen that happen in the past with similar situations. So, more than likely, they'll just update the permit.
Thank you, Madam President, I'm ready.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, motion passes, thank you. The next item for public hearing is Arcata Springs.
Yes, this is a public hearing for requests for final plat approval. The project is Arcadia Springs North, Section 1, Phase 11, lots 206 through 209, 244 through 259, 290 through 292, and 315 through 324. The file's 2310-348, and the developer is Monarch Development Group, Inc., the engineer is Gordon. It's located in the Arden District, Tax Map 12, Parcel 29.3, and is located on Van Clevesville Road, approximately 2,000 feet east of its intersection with Neady Road. The developer is proposing 10 single-family detached lots and 23 single-family attached lots on approximately eight acres to be served by public water and sewer. The final plat meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore, staff recommends final plat approval contingent upon receipt of surety in the amount of $967,728 even, plat to be released upon receipt of surety and developer's agreement.
Do we have anyone to represent the project?
Lynch Christian, I'm here on behalf of the developer.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, if you have questions or comments, please come forward and make those known at this time. Let the record show that there's no one to speak under the public hearing. I have a motion by Mr. Goff.
Second.
Second to Mr. Gant, to close the public hearing. Any questions?
There are no questions, I'll make a motion to accept staff recommendation.
We gotta vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, the public hearing is now closed. Now you're ready for your motion.
There are no questions, I'll make a motion to accept staff recommendation, final plat approval, contingent upon receipt of surety in amount of $967,728, plat to be released upon surety and developer's agreement.
I have a motion, Mr. Goff, Mr. Gant, second to Mr. Goff, to accept staff recommendation, and that is to give final plat approval contingent upon receiving the amount of $967,728. Any questions? And no questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Last public hearing is Fargo Properties.
Yes, this is a public hearing for request of sketch plan advancement. The project is Fargo Properties, file 2310-352. The developer is Frank Fargo, and the engineer is Integrity Federal Services. It's located in the Mill Creek District, Tax Map 6F, Parcel 9, and is located north of the intersection of Jaredstown Road and Winchester Avenue. The developer's proposing a multi-use building with one 2,880 square foot office on the first floor and three 960 square foot apartments on the second floor. This site's approximately 0.52 acres and will be served by public water and sewer. At the January 16, 2024 Planning Commission meeting, the developer was granted a waiver to Section 801, Table 8-1B, Item Number 8 for off-street parking of the subdivision ordinance to allow for 19 shared parking spaces contingent on the following: The fan accessible handicap space is sufficient only if the accessible route from that space provides proper access for both the residential and commercial use. If not, a second accessible space would be provided. And all residential spaces shall be labeled with pavement markings and permanent signage for residential use only. On January 17, 2024, County Engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance. The sketch plan meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore, staff recommends advancement of the sketch plan to the preliminary plan stage.
Thank you, do we have anyone to represent Fargo Properties?
Brooke Perry from Integrity Federal Services.
Thank you. It's a public hearing, your opportunity to speak regarding this project. No one in the audience wishes to speak regarding the public hearing for Fargo Properties? Okay, I have a motion, motion by Mr. Goff to close public hearing. Need a second?
Sure.
Second to Mr. Gant. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any questions? Motion passes. Okay, planning commission members, do you have questions of Ms. Perry or of the staff?
There are no questions, I'll make a motion to accept staff recommendation to advance the sketch plan to preliminary plan stage.
Okay, I have a motion, Mr. Gant, second to Mr. Goff, to accept staff recommendation, and that is to advance project Fargo Properties into the final plat stage. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
I would just like to clarify that it is going to the preliminary plat stage, so as long as we don't have to remake that motion.
It's a preliminary plan, that's, it does say that.
Are we good?
We're good.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, preliminary plan approval for Bunker Hill Water Treatment Plant.
Yes, this is a request for preliminary plan approval. The project is Bunker Hill Water Treatment Plant. The file is 2211-323. The developer is the Berkeley County Public Service Water District, and the engineer is Hazen and Sawyer. It's located in the Mill Creek District, Tax Map 9, Parcel 92, and is located at 97 Runnymede Road, approximately 500 feet west of its intersection with Winchester Avenue. This project proposes the redevelopment and replacement of the existing water treatment plant on approximately 2.8 acres. At the June 21, 2022 Planning Commission meeting, the developer was granted the following waivers: Section 801, Table 8-1B, Public Utilities and Facilities subsection requiring one parking space for every 400 square feet of gross floor area, plus one parking space for each stored vehicle. Section 502, or 501.2.8 requiring a 50-foot railroad buffer. Section 503.1 requiring a 50-foot front set-back. And Section 802 requiring a 25-foot buffer area between residential and commercial uses. On June 23, 2023, County Engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance. The preliminary plan meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore, staff recommends approval of the preliminary plan.
Do we have anyone to represent Bunker Hill Water Treatment Plant?
Hi, I'm Jim from the Water District.
Thank you. Planning Commission members, do you have questions of Mr. Jim or of the staff?
I'm gonna make a motion to accept staff recommendation. Preliminary plan meets the requirements of subdivision ordinance. Staff recommends approval of preliminary plan.
I have a motion by Mr. Gant, second to Mr. Goff, to accept staff recommendation for the Bunker Hill Water Treatment Plant, and that is to grant preliminary plan approval. Are there any questions? If not, could I have, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Okay, final plat determination Willow Glenn. Huh? Oh, I'm sorry, Brett. Preliminary final Brett. Barrett. Sorry.
Yep, this is a request for preliminary final plat approval. The project is Barrett, file 2311-369. The developer is William Barrett, and the surveyor is DL Consulting. It's located in the Hudgesville District, Tax Map 37, Parcel 6.14. This project's located 700 feet west of Thatcher Road, approximately 300 feet south of Cuswell Road at 281 Psychopath. The project proposes the creation of one 2.07 acre residential lot to be served by private well and septic. At the November 6, 2023 Planning Commission meeting, the developer was granted a waiver to Section 305.4.1 of the subdivision ordinance requiring frontage on a DOH road in order to proceed through the preliminary final plat process. On January 29, 2024, County Engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project compliant. This project is found to be in compliance with the subdivision ordinance, therefore, staff recommends approval of the preliminary final plat.
Do we have anyone to represent Barrett? Planning Commission members, do you have questions of the staff?
There are none, who accepts staff recommendations?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Whitaker, second to Mr. Gant, to accept staff recommendation, and that is to grant preliminary final plat approval to Barrett. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any questions? Motion carries. Okay, final plat determination Willow Glenn.
Yes, this is a request for final plat determination. The project is Willow Glenn, Section 3, Lots 80 through 95, and 132 through 157. The file is 2311-374. The developer is MDGWG, Inc., the engineer is Gordon. It's located in the Mill Creek District, Tax Map 6, Parcel 73. This project's located on Middleway Pike, approximately 0.2 miles southeast of its intersection, of the intersection of Middleway Pike and Jaredstown Road. This final plat proposes 42 townhouse lots on 4.97 acres to be served by public water and sewer. At the July 6, 2022 Planning Commission meeting, the developer was granted a waiver to Article 8, Section 801, Table 8-1A8 of the subdivision ordinance to reduce the number of all flat parking spaces from 1 to 0.6, allowing a total of 3.6 spaces per unit with three being on-site, one in the garage, and two in the driveway, and 0.6 being provided in off-site parking areas. On January 22, 2024, County Engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance. The final plat meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore, staff recommends final plat determination and advertising of a public hearing for consideration of final plat approval at the March 4, 2024 Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you, do we have anyone to represent the project?
Brooke Perry, Integrity Federal Services, which was previously Gordon.
Planning Commission members, do you have questions of Ms. Perry or the staff?
There are no questions, I'll make a motion to accept staff recommendation. Final plat meets the requirements of subdivision ordinance 2009. Staff recommends, recommends final plat determination advertising for a public hearing for consideration of final plat approval March 4, 2024 Planning Commission meeting.
I have a motion from Mr. Gant, second to Mr. Goff, to accept staff recommendation, and that is to conduct the public hearing on March 4, 2024, at which time the final plat will be considered for approval. Are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes, thank you. Next is Heritage Hills, Section 1, Phase 11.
Yes, this is another request for final plat determination. The project is Heritage Hills, Section 1, Phase 11, Lots T135 through T142, and T119 through T126. The file is 2305-152. The developer is Oakwood HH LLC, and the surveyor is Roberts Land Surveying. It's located in the Arden District, Tax Map 10, Parcel 129, and is located on Pains Ford Road, approximately 0.22 miles west from its intersection with Kelly Island Road. The project proposes 16 townhouse lots on 11.33 acres to be served by public water and sewer. At the October 5, 2015 Planning Commission meeting, the developer was granted the following waivers to the subdivision ordinance: Table 8-1A8 to reduce the parking required from three spaces per unit for townhomes to 2.6 spaces per unit, and Section 504E to reduce the required lot width from 75 to 72 for the following lots: R204 through 207, R210 through 212, and R215 through 216, which is not relevant to this particular section. On January 29, 2024, County Engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance. The final plat meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore, staff recommends final plat determination and advertising of a public hearing for consideration of final plat approval at the March 4, 2024 Planning Commission meeting.
Do we have anyone to represent the project?
Yes, Mike Roberts, Representative, Project.
Okay, planning commission members, do you have questions of Mr. Roberts or the staff?
There are no questions, I'll make a motion to accept staff recommendation. Final plat meets the requirements of subdivision ordinance. Staff recommends final plat determination advertising for a public hearing for consideration of final plat approval on March 4, 2024 Planning Commission meeting.
I have a motion by Mr. Gant, second to Mr. Goff, to accept staff recommendation, and that is to conduct the public hearing on March 4, at which time the final plat will be considered for its approval. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Any questions? Motion passes. Okay, Heritage Hills, Section 1, Phase 12.
This is a request for final plat determination. The project is Heritage Hills, Section 1, Phase 12, Lots R313 through R324. The file is 2305-152. The developer is Oakwood HH LLC, and the surveyor is Roberts Land Surveying. It's located in the Arden District, Tax Map 10, Parcel 129, and is located on Pains Ford Road, approximately 0.22 miles west from its intersection with Kelly Island Road. This final plat proposes 12 single-family lots on 3.2 acres to be served by public water and sewer. At the October 5, 2015 Planning Commission meeting, the developer was granted the following waiver: Table 8-1A8 to reduce the required parking from three spaces per unit for townhomes to 2.6 spaces per unit, and lot width reduction from 75 feet to 72 feet for lots R204 through 207, R210 through 212, and R215 through 216. On January 29, 2024, County Engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance. The final plat meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore, staff recommends final plat determination and advertising of a public hearing for consideration of final plat approval at the March 4, 2024 Planning Commission meeting.
Mr. Roberts, you represent us again?
Yes.
Your questions, planning commission members of Mr. Roberts or of the staff?
There are none, I'll make a motion to accept staff recommendation. Final plat meets the requirements of subdivision ordinance. Staff recommends final plat determination advertising and public hearing for consideration of final plat approval on March 4, 2024 Planning Commission meeting.
I have a motion by Mr. Gant, second to Mr. Goff, to accept staff recommendation, and that is to conduct the public hearing on March 4, at which time the final plat will be determined approved. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes, thank you. Okay, Willow Glenn.
Yes, this is a request for final plat determination. The project's Willie Glenn, Section 2, Lots 37 through 64, and 71 through 79. The file is 2311-373. The developer is MDGWG, Inc., and the engineer is Gordon. It's located in the Mill Creek District, Tax Map 6, Parcel 73, and is located on Middleway Pike, approximately 0.2 miles southeast of the intersection of Middleway Pike and Jaredstown Road. This final plat proposes 37 townhouse lots on 3.63 acres to be served by public water and sewer. At the July 6, 2022 Planning Commission meeting, the developer was granted a waiver to Article 8, Section 801, Table 8-1A8 of the subdivision ordinance to reduce the 8, section 801, table 8-1A8 of the subdivision ordinance to reduce the number of all lot parking spaces from 1 to 0.6, allowing a total of 3.6 spaces per unit with three being on-site and 0.6 being provided in off-site parking areas. On January 30, 2024, county engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance. The final plat meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore, staff recommends final plat determination and advertising of a public hearing for consideration of final plat approval at the March 4, 2024 Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you. Ms. Perry, are you on that one?
Brooke Perry, Integrity Federal.
Thank you. Planning commission members, do you have questions of Ms. Perry or the staff regarding Willow Glenn?
There are no questions. I'll make the motion to accept staff recommendation. Final plat meets the requirements of subdivision ordinance. Staff recommends final plat determination, advertising, and public hearing for consideration of final plat approval on March 4, 2024 Planning Commission meeting.
Okay, I have a motion, Mr. Gant, second by Mr. Goff, to accept staff recommendation, and that is once again to conduct the public hearing on March 4, at which time the final plat will be considered for its approval. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Have a great night. Staff counsel discussion, action motion.
Oh, basically, I just did the 2023 activity report, you guys can take a look at it. It's obviously a little different than what we've seen in the past couple of years, but it's been nonetheless.
Laura, I have a question. Thank you for putting this together. It looks like, looking at the numbers of sketch preliminary final, the 2023 total lots for preliminary plan advancement is way ahead of any other year the past 10 years, so 1,900 lots. Reading the tea leaves, how do you think that'll play out in '24 for final lots and then?
It always has its flows, so like, you see for a few years, you'll have a lot of preliminary plans, and then we'll see a lot of final plats, so I think like, we're just gonna have a lot more final plats coming through. We obviously have newer stuff, like new sketch plans coming in, but we've seen a trend with a lot more commercial sketch plans, more so than residential, for obvious reasons. So I think the next couple of years, we'll just be final plat heavy, and probably commercial industrial type plan heavy.
And looking at the number of acres that those, the bigger number covers, it's a smaller number of acres, or you're seeing higher density development coming up in the next near future.
Yeah, that's what we've seen currently.
They're going totally up there.
You're not seeing well incentive.
I mean, they're trying to, you know, their business model, as I was saying, is very small on it, straight, small dollars.
Small profit margins, that's why.
Well, that's probably a lot, I would say. The demand seems to be there, I mean, it would be simple, people literally gave with this stuff, this stuff.
Wouldn't be like 400 lots less last year than it was versus the year before. I said last year, 2023.
There's a lot of stuff coming online to be done, I mean, there's several rather big subdivisions that are out there, and they're just, I mean, they're gonna be built down this year.
Yep. Thank you all for your work.
You have the plan in front of you, the activity report. I'd like for you to take a good hard look at it in the next two weeks. We'll put it back on the agenda at the next Planning Commission meeting, and additional questions can be had at that time, okay? Anything else? Mr. Legel, you have anything you want to talk about?
Yes, nothing.
How's the subdivision rewrite coming?
Called, I did call, I talked to our county.
Administrator?
Administrator, yes, sir. Sorry. You told him I wanted to put it on the agenda to break down, and he wants to work on it. Public hearing, please.
Good, good, good. Okay, thank you very much. We'll be looking forward to that. Is there anything anybody else wants to discuss? Okay, 6:35, that's a pretty good time. Most of them, Mr. Goff, second by Mr. Gant. Any questions?